Well, the meeting is ordered at six o'clock. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
That goes a lot better line.
Man, that sounds terrible.
You should just play a report.
All right, pursuant to the open public meeting, that document this meeting was emailed to the Herald News Record Office of County Clerk and posted on PCC website and voted board on July 26, 2020.
Hello, my red party members. Trustee Drake Kurt, trustee Skicke.
Yes.
Trustee Globen. Trustee Montanet, David Haye.
Here.
Trustee Moody.
President.
Trustee Nutter. Trustee Coe.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Trebetti. Vice Chair Tannen.
Here.
Chairman Marco.
Yes.
Thank you. First order of business is consideration of the minutes of the August 17, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move it.
Move it, okay. Do none.
Second.
Okay, roll.
Trustee Skicke.
Yes.
Trustee Montanet, David Haye.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Coe. Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee, Vice Chair Tannen.
Yes.
Chairman Marco.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. And I'll have Stephen Hardy join me in a minute and we'll walk you through some revisions to the budget. But let me first just kind of set it up for you just so you have an idea of what's going on because obviously this is, we've never been like, you know, none of us have ever lived through this type of time before and, you know, the impact on our budget, you know, is, would have been incredible, has been incredible. But fortunately, and I gotta praise our friends in Washington, you know, they actually did what they needed to do. And I don't think most, I think most of us in our lifetimes can't always say that, that Washington did what we needed them to do. But they saw a huge crisis coming for all types of industries, whether it's education, whether it's hospitals, whether it's restaurants, whether it's this or that. But they stepped up and they provided the type of support that if we didn't get, I'm not sure, we would not be having this type of meeting right now. We would have had to lay off dozens if, or more employees would have had to be, been laid off because everybody took a hidden enrollment. I mean, you can't, the pandemic had that type of impact, especially student, the type of student who attends this college. So fortunately, in, you know, three different times, Congress stepped up and approved specific formula money that went to colleges. Based on our student body, we got tremendous support, not just for the institution, but for our students as well. So we have been able to set up an emergency fund for students. So if a student has problems with paying their rent, if a student has had problems, needed a computer, if a student needed this, or student needed that, we've set up a system where we're able to help those students. And so far, Stephen, we've given out over $5 million directly to students. This is directly to our students. You know, if students had trouble paying their bills to the college, we were one of those unique ties where we've been able to help them. Even some who had longstanding debt to the college, we were able to wipe it out for them. You know, this, this was a time where, you know, I think, you know, the folks in Washington saw that, you know, this pandemic could either affect us for the next decade or two economically and put us into the deepest recession we could ever go into, or by putting this type of stimulus in the economy, it could help save us. And I think they got it right. And, you know, it's, most of us, again, have never been able to say that they really got it right, but they did. And I can honestly say without it, we could not be having this conversation tonight. So where we are right now is, you know, we're good this year. We're good next year. So we've got two years that are good. What happens after that really remains to be seen at this point. You know, will enrollment, you know, like every other college, we're enrollment driven. You know, while we receive money from the state and we receive money from the county, you know, the very part of our budget is the amount of tuition that we collect and that's based on how many students we have. You know, right, we did not see the type of decline in enrollment. You know, we're still registering students this fall. We're hoping that by the time, you know, we, we've changed a lot of what we've done. Dr. Kneebie and her staff have, you know, totally redone our course schedule, pretty much. And next year, it's going to be totally redone again. You know, offering, you know, we have six week classes that haven't even started yet, that, you know, we even have a semester that starts November 2nd. So we're going to still be registering, you know, all through the semester. I think we got a good shot. If, if all goes well, then we could probably have level enrollment for this fall. You know, last year was a 16% decline. And this is typical of colleges. I mean, this is, you know, we're a community college. This is not, you know, we were not in any way out of, out of the normal. But, you know, with a 16% enrollment meant we have less students last year, even if our retention improves, that we can keep more of the students we had, it's still going to be a lower number. You're retaining from a smaller pool of students. And the new students have improved somewhat this fall, but not up to pre-pandemic levels at this point. So it's really hard to, you know, guess where we're going to be. Fall '23 is the key. You know, we are being very conservative up to that point. And, you know, we're not going to spend the money until we know we have it. You know, so we've got this federal money, which will keep us whole at this point and make up for any losses that we have, and that's great. And it's allowing us to do projects and allowing us to do lots of things, once in a lifetime types of things that we are able to do. But, you know, so wonderful for fiscal year '22, which is what we're in right now, probably wonderful for fiscal year '23 and shouldn't have been many problems there. But what happens after that is really anybody's guess at this point. So just, Stephen, you want to come up and we'll just walk them through the, the changes we've made?
So the tuition, credit and fees, we'll put those two together because that's a function of total credits. That's down just slightly. We've got courses that are down. We just tweaked it a little bit based on the current information. So that's a modest change.
Stephen, why did fees go down percentage of all so much more than tuition?
So what we do when we do the fees, we actually look at last year's enrollment. We go section by section and it's based on that. So it's not a true function of changing one versus the other. We actually look at the courses, we look at the fees terms in the courses, we look at the enrollment and we base it on that.
As the course mix.
Yeah. So we have, we have a schedule just at that time.
Good.
But, yeah. And the huge increase, which you all know about, which is we got from the county, we got basically an additional billion there. So we increased it from last year's budget. Then we came back and did a revised session for that. And so that's an actual, so that went up almost a million dollars.
So you'll see in January, the budget you approved in January, in order to balance it at that point, we had to take $884,000 out of our reserves, our fund balance, our surplus that we had. That was the only way that we could balance the budget, was by taking money out of reserves. Now, the story you've heard from us a few times before. Back in 2017, when the Trump administration came into Washington, we saw a huge decline in the number of undocumented students who attend the college. We lost almost 1,000 students in one year. That was the first time in the history of the college that we had to dip into our reserves to balance the budget. And there was, there was no way of us, you know, we had a choice of doing massive layoffs or dipping into our reserves. And that is why you have reserves for, you know, it's a rate pay fund and it was raining and we needed to use, it was pouring and we need to use those funds in order to make up for it. But it left us dangerously low in terms of the amount of reserves that we had. You know, we had a couple of billion and we spent a couple of billion. And so we need desperately to rebuild our reserves. And what it appears we're going to be able to do is in the next year or two, part of the plan we have is to budget very conservatively in a way that will help us to build these reserves. So by, by the time we get to '23, we'll, we'll be in good shape in terms of our reserves. But, so we've been able to take out this $884,000 that we were, had to take from reserves we barely had in order to do the budget. And when we did the budget, we knew that wasn't the final budget in January. But.
So that's the huge thunder. The next thing we did was the state name. We know that's going up. We didn't have a firm, don't have a firm number at the time. We increased the budget, so we did a modest 2%, as Dr. Rose said, we want to be conservative. So we increased that another 2%.
Now, we know Dennis was part of a meeting about 10 days, two weeks ago, whenever it was, where there is a new funding formula, which has been adopted for the community college and who still has to be approved by Office of Management of Budget. And it has been approved by the Secretary of Higher Ed.
Oh, indeed.
Yes. So it will be approved, but until it's approved, we're not going with the new number. But it's a drastic increase for us.
Let's see. The next noticeable thing is food service. So that jumped significantly, 468,000. At the time we brought the budget to you all, we based the budget based on operations at that time. You know, we were in the height of the pandemic. So we didn't know. We restored food services and so we just increased it based on that. Also, that number includes what we're doing for our food service program, which, I'm still wishfully drawn like.
Student program?
What, I'm sorry?
Student program.
Yes. Program, thank you. So that didn't exist before the pandemic and we're still doing that as well. So that's in that increase. And SGA, we typically have that budget, the budget, but we adjusted that basically to reflect the credits. So there's a straight fee and the board approval for them and it's just a function of the credits. Was there a question? Oh, okay. So that's in top side of the revenue on the expense piece. I'll just kind of summarize that. The bulk of that budget is tied to labor. So we budgeted for 280, 280?
I think 280.
280, 280 positions. We have 33 vacant, but we budgeted at full strength based on what's on our chart. And we did increase HVAC costs because more of the days this year were colder compared to last year. We had more bodies on campus, so we expected to increase this and we bumped that. So that's going to make up the bulk of the increase of the labor.
Except it hasn't been working.
That's another story. Yes. We're working on that. So we have had more harder days compared to same time last year. So we increased that, HVAC. We increased the cost for that. And then also labor, as I said, we budgeted at full strength. And then we budgeted with benefits based on merit, which is significantly more than single. Usually we do a mix. This year we just did all the vacant, all the vacant positions as merit. So that's a significant increase.
And that's how we hope to build our surplus, you know, to get us to a point where we have a legit, the right amount here, not over, but, you know, we're going through our accreditation to 2024. And there is an expectation of how many, how much your reserves will be. We're nowhere close to where we need to be right now. So we're, we're trying to do a plan that will get us there.
Is there a formula for the reserves?
So they have, yes, there's a formula, but they have this huge ratio test and we have to answer every year while we're a little lower than the ratio. Yeah, so there's, there's a formula. It comes in IPads. There's a couple of different criteria for that.
Around 6 million.
But 6 million.
Is about where we should be.
Yeah.
Is that based on our SAE County, our FTE, our budget?
Budget, mostly, mostly the budget. And some nuance within the budget as to, you know, how our budget is made up.
I can't imagine we're the only college that has seen a drop in reserves.
No, no, no. But there were very few colleges that get hit as hard as we did by the undocumented. That, that's, that's what did it to us. If it wasn't for that, you know, we would not have dipped into our reserves the way we did. That's, that was unexpected, losing 1,000 students in one year to something that didn't have to do with a recession, didn't have to do with anything else. That's, that, that was just a truly unexpected thing.
So those are the highlights. I mean, I'll open it up. I'll take any questions that you have.
It's good. You know, just to get, as an aside to what we were talking about before with the HVAC, you know, we are suffering, you know, like everybody else with supply chain issues. You know, so when a unit goes down, a compressor goes down, you know, normally in the past, we were able to, you know, even if it was a unique part, they fly it in from California and we have it in, you know, 24, 36 hours and we have the part. Now, when a part goes down, you know, basically the professionals, oh, we don't know when it's, we're going to be able to get. And, you know, we're going a week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks at times where you cannot get parts for simple things, which in the past were routine in terms of fixing when the HVAC went down. You know, we brought people in and we fixed it. We, you approve service contracts every year and we've got great people who are doing these, this work for us. But if they can't get the part, they can't get the part. I mean, you know, every once in a while, they can jerry rig something and get it working until the part comes in, but sometimes that's not possible. So, you know, Brad could tell you, he's seen it, you know, made a lot of the purchases we're, we're doing for technology where we're trying, you know, things that normally had a two week lead time, three week lead time or Chris does too. You know, it's a three month, four month, five month lead time in order to get things, anything with a chip in it. If it doesn't chip in it, it's taking forever.
Well, it's across the board, simple things. So like we order custom masks, there's a lead time there. So it's anything that requires like an added service to it, added value, the lead time is just increasing steadily.
From these 1,000 undocumented students, did we reach out to see if we can get any of them back?
Oh, you definitely did. No, we've, you know, we've been reaching out. Look, at that time, there was probably, you know, the 2,000 student tour in jeopardy, you know, who were undocumented. And some made the decision, and they told us, they were very odd. I mean, I can't, I mean, I remember some students, you know, who I got to know who came to see me directly and said, look, can you protect us? Are you going to be able to, you know, if you get a subpoena, are you going to give them my name? I mean, we got those kind of questions from, from students and they were just scared. And, you know, the interesting thing is we don't know what happened to a lot of them. You know, these were people who were undocumented. They could not work legally here. They were going to school here. You know, some of them were in the process of trying to get their green card and do things like that. But, you know, they were trying to do the right thing. But, so it's unlikely that they got work. So where are they? I mean, that's, that's, and that's a question, you know, that everybody's trying to figure out right now. You know, we keep reaching out to them. We still have their, at least the name and address of where they were back then, you know, and some have come back. Some, some did come back, but a lot, unfortunately, I think are gone forever. And there's still people who are fearful right now. You know, that didn't go away just because, you know, administrations changed in Washington, that fear. And, you know, these are, you know, some of these students were DACA, but some of them were not DACA. You know, they were, they were just undocumented. You know, didn't go to high school here or didn't go to high school for three years here or, you know, their ties were different. But, you know, many of them had, you know, no ties to anywhere else. It's a typical story.
I will add, under Dr. Rose's leadership, Dr. Kneebie's work with 13, we've reached out to students on multiple levels. We have a ton of call campaigns. We've done different marketing campaigns. We even did the Rappel to try to draw enrollment. And students, the best advertising is word of mouth. They hear, oh, you took care of this person's balance? Well, how about mine? And as Dr. Rose mentioned, you know, taken care of over 5 billion in past few balances. So that opened the doors for the students to come back. So we are working on that through other avenues.
You know, under Governor Murphy, he did send, his administration sent, set the right tone in New Jersey. For the first time, we now have an alternative financial aid form that you could fill out. You know, undocumented still are not eligible for federal financial aid, but they are eligible for New Jersey financial aid. And there is an alternative form that they can fill out. And that's only in the past, probably two, two and a half years. So that does send a good message in New Jersey that these students are welcome. And, you know, we've always welcomed them here, even when it wasn't popular to welcome undocumented students. That's been our way of doing things here at the college.
That deadline expired on the 15th of the week.
For new students.
Yeah. We, we just had that broadcast. I was just telling Ms. Martin that, though. That's a good way of getting students in.
Right. But if a new student wants to start in January, they could still apply. You know, it's, yeah. Or if you haven't been here before, if you're, if you're a returning student, you're out of luck.
I know it's hard, but I don't know how it would happen to get a visa, a student visa, but maybe the older age. It's not easy, of course.
It's, student visas are those, you know, when, when Washington changes rules, even when administrations change, it could take years to change them back to what was done. So a lot of the, you know, basically, we're, we're no longer welcoming international students into this country, you know, in the ways we used to. Getting a student visa is 100 times harder than it was 10 years ago. Now, they have, they have changed some of the rules and made it easier, but those rules are in the process of changing. And it may be another two years, three years until we get back to, you know, where we were. But nothing changes quickly in Washington. That's, that's why it's so shocking. They did the right thing, but it came to, you know, providing support. Okay?
Okay.
So I'll just continue on if that's okay. We have purchase of foods and services. Happy to answer any questions about any of them that are in here. Nothing out of the ordinary tonight in terms, in terms of purchases. Of great significance is, is discussion of the vaccination policy. None of the, so when you hear Governor Murphy has made all these proclamations for these types of employees or those types of employees, we're not covered by any of them. So any, any of the things you've heard that public employees have this or this employee has this, the college has absolutely not been affected by anything coming out of the state. President Biden made some proclamations last week. Mike has taken a look at it. We have, still do not know whether we will be covered by those who are, give a little more detail.
Yeah, sure. So back, the first week in September, the president said he was issuing an executive order requiring federal contractors to be vaccinated. We don't fall into that definition or we get a grant. We'll fall into that definition. He also said that OSHA, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, would be issuing a rule. And the way I first saw the reports on that, I thought that he had issued a second executive order. He did, he just said that OSHA was working on a, a rule that they call an emergency temporary standard that's only been done three or four times in the history of OSHA, going back to 1970 or '71. The last time they did it was this year in response to a Biden executive order issued in January, right after inauguration, and they issued the EPS in June. Do the math, it's off in five months. Hopefully, they're going to move a little bit quicker. The reporting is that the OSHA rule will apply not only to, at the federal level, but will apply to state and local governmental entities, including schools and colleges. But we don't know how the rule's going to be fashioned. And because New Jersey has a state-approved Occupational Safety and Health Act of its own, approved by the federal government, the word is that they're, we're going to have, where the state of New Jersey is going to have an additional 30 days after that rule gets issued at the federal level to issue a rule that is at least as stringent as the federal rule or more so. So until we see the rule and how it's fashioned, I don't know when that rule's coming out. I don't know whether we absolutely will be covered by it or not. And whether or not the rule, when it comes out, will apply to us at that time, or there'll be another 30 days before the state decides to do something and if the state decides to do something differently. So.
And chances are that would only apply to employees, not to students, which is the biggest part of our community.
That is correct.
So it's, you know, even if we were covered by this, it really doesn't, you know, do, do, do what we need. So, you know, obviously, you know, I'm, I'm on a, in touch with the New Jersey Department of Health, who constantly having, having talks with them, getting their latest guidance, certainly have been working. I will tell you, just, the SAE County has done an absolutely wonderful job in terms of the Department of Health and how they handle, you know, starting with testing, starting with vaccinations. They've really just been wonderful. And in terms of working with us, you know, working with everybody, I don't think, I don't think they've singled us out. I think they just, whoever, whoever they needed to work with, they, they have just been incredibly cooperative. And, you know, talking with the rest of the colleges and universities. One thing that's a little different, and you can, I think you know this about us, you know, we tend, if we're going to do something, we're going to do it right. We're not going to do it wrong. So one, one other, only one community college announced a few months ago that they are doing a vaccine mandate for this fall. And they, they announced it, I think, back in June or July. They never did, they never did, they never, they haven't even started at this point doing it because, and I'm not criticizing them, they figured out how complicated it was, that this is, is not simple. The, the problem is that, you know, if, if it were just employees, it would be, it wouldn't be that hard. We, we could figure it out if it were just employees. But when you're dealing with students, and the big problem is, do you give them an op, an option to test, as, as the governor said, once or twice a week? Or, or, so let's just say once, you know, that, give them an option to test once a week. So when you start playing out the logistics of that, let's say we had 80% of our students vaccinated. I don't think we do have 80%, but let's say 80% would be pretty high if, if we were to have. Let's, let's say it's 70% of our students vaccinated and we're trying to, you know, figure out exactly what that number is right now. But let's, let's say it's 70% of our students are vaccinated. But between our credit students and our non-credit students between our credit students and our non-credit students right now, we probably have about 10,000 students enrolled at the college. Okay? So if you start doing the math, that could be 3,000 students a week that we would have to collect test results from. So these 3,000 students would have to get tested somewhere. And we say, you know, let's say by Monday night, you have to submit, if you're a student, if you're not vaccinated, you must submit to the Dean of Students' Office your test result for that week. We then have to go through maybe 3,000, 2,000, 1,800, 2600, whatever number it is, we have to go through them. Number one, determine which turned it in and which didn't turn it in, and make sure that it's real, that they actually turned it in. And then we have to do something about it. We have to then, so the average student here takes three classes, you know, something five, something one, something, the average student takes three classes. So for every one of those students, we have to let the faculty know, don't let that student get to class. It's impossible. I mean, you know, we could say we're going to do that, but it's, it's not going to work. You know, and it's, you know, to just saying we're going to do something and then not do it, you know, that's the one thing our legal counsel hates, is that when you say you're going to do something and you do it poorly, you know, nothing opens you up to, you know, more scrutiny than that. Like they say, so, you know, in, in talking to everyone around here, you know, obviously, the uncertainty, this, this could be going on for a while. This is not, you know, unfortunately, it's not going away anytime soon. You know, we did, we did institute a mask policy for, for this fall, and I will tell you that the compliance has been outstanding. I mean, absolutely outstanding. Our, our students just, you know, have, have, we haven't had any problems. You know, everybody, some people were worried over summer, well, what's going to happen when a student shows up that refuses to wear their mask? Well, what else is going to happen? Nothing. Zero. Nothing. It's been, I jack that up, it's been many issues. I mean, I-
More with the faculty.
More with the faculty. Not wanting to wear a mask. Yes, yes. It's, it's the faculty who are causing the trouble, not the students. Yeah, yeah. One or two in particular.
Highly educated.
Highly educated, yeah. They are vaccinated, but, yeah. So, so, so what I'm, what I'm recommending to you tonight is, is a policy which would require all of our employees, at this point, I'm going to say January 1st to 22, that all of our employees must be vaccinated by then, unless some, a need comes down from somebody that actually applies to us before then. I, my, my feeling is the vast majority of our employees are already vaccinated. So, but it gives those who have some hesitancy a little time to do that. If there are objectors and religious and medical issues, we will evaluate them. If, if those are approved, we will have a testing program for them, that they will be able to test weekly, and that should be a manageable number that we should be able to handle and, and do that. For students, we're, we're going to have a slightly different policy, that, you know, if a student is to take classes on campus, they need to be vaccinated, to come on campus, they need to be vaccinated. If not, we will continue to provide remote services to them, and we will continue to provide classes which they can take remotely. It may not be every class that we give at the college. I don't think that's possible to do that, but we will have a robust number of courses that will be available come January. If a student, for one reason or another, refuses to get vaccinated, it's a medical reason, they would still be able to take classes remotely from the college or online at that point. So in, in discussing it internally, we just don't think there's any way, much more complicated than that, that we can do well and administer properly and be able to, so happy to get any feedback, any questions, any?
If things are going to change in January, will testing stop?
No.
That will continue?
No, no, I mean, we, we do have testing on campus every week available to folks. I will tell you that those numbers have dwindled to a handful of people taking advantage of it each week. It's not, it's not a big number. So we're, you hear from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, two days a week, and it's, you can count one or two hands, the numbers of students who, and stay outdoors taking advantage of it. So, you know, they're, they're going to still be here as long, as long as there's a demand, they'll be here. I mean, we're not, we're not going, we're not going to stop it. But, you know, we want, obviously, we want people to be safe. We want people to have the assurances that they need.
Mike, you said the OSHA rule should be out by January?
Well, just doing the math from the last one, I don't know. You know, like, the way the president talked, it sounded like it was coming immediately. Exactly. But it took them five months to do the last one. Now, part of that may have been the change in the administration, you know, people not knowing where the levers were in the department. Hopefully, they're a little bit more savvy. They've got, given more staffed out. But there's just no way.
I mean, there was a three or four hour period where we believed that when Governor Murphy, Governor Murphy, when he made an announcement, said that all public colleges, you would, you don't think, all public colleges and universities would be covered by this. Well, what he meant to say was all public colleges and universities covered by the state contract that they have with employees would be covered by it, not, not us. So for a couple hours, we thought it applied to us. And then, and honestly, I think we would have been happy if it did, although, you know, the, the testing requirement that they have on that, again, as I explained before, I don't know how we could administer it effectively. I just, even if we hired 10 people to do it, I'm not sure how we could, because it's so time sensitive each week.
Well, the executive order of 252, which applies to healthcare, I mean, was poorly written. Not a lot of guidance they need to go by in the executive order.
Yep.
I'm sure the same thing applies to the ones with the schools.
Yeah. And then the other confusing thing, that he said he was issuing the executive order for one group, and then he talked about state workers, but that wasn't an executive order, that was a policy.
Right.
I don't know.
And look, I'm, I'm not blaming anyone for, for this stuff. You know, obviously, we've never done this before. This is brand new to everybody. It's, it's very complicated. But, you know, we're, we're, you know, we try to set the right tone here, and we try to be leaders when it comes to this stuff. And, you know, we want to do it right. And we, I want to be able to say six months from now that we implemented a policy well, that we implemented it fairly, and that it was, you know, fair to our students, fair to our employees, and, you know, kept everybody safe while, you know, not causing too much disruption, you know, to what, what we're doing. You know, obviously, we're concerned. You know, you know, students are, you know, the county was wonderful and came in on August 30th and did a full day of vaccinations here on campus. The turnout was not great. And we had, I think we ended up maybe with 50 who came out. We are paying $150 to each student to get vaccinated. You know, so, and that's, that's not on their bill. That's, that's cash to them. Okay? You know, come in, we'll give you a $150, and we're giving away laptops to students. We've given away 80 already to students who entered every weekend lottery. They, they get, they get entered to, you know, so we're, we're providing incentives.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I hung out when the county was here that day, and, you know, the public health workers from the county, I worked top notch. But several students showed up not to get the shot, but to talk with the people about getting the shot. I mean, that shows, I mean, I, I give them credit. I mean, they, you know, they're, you know, and they're not, it is not a political thing as to why they are not getting the shot. They, they truly are, you know, concerned. In some ways, it's cultural, it's based on, you know, how they grew up and, and what they believe. And, you know, these, you know, some groups have been mistreated for a lot of years. And, you know, these are deeply-held beliefs that they have. So I was listening to one student, he became, like, he became part of the community. You could tell how torn this student was about getting the shot. I mean, it was, it was sincere. I mean, it was not, you know, this was a lot of crackpot student, you know, this is a well-flown-out student who was genuinely afraid of, of getting the vaccine. You know, but a couple of them who came in, I think, who had an psychotic. So, I mean, you know, we're, we're making progress, but, you know, I could tell we're never going to be 100%. It's just not something that is going to happen.
Any questions on the vaccination policies?
Have it much better than the public?
I know.
Because we have to do contractors, all kinds of stuff. Consultants that are in the district more than three days, there's a lot going on. And like you said, almost impossible.
And, and of course, if something goes wrong, they're going to say, they're going to hold you responsible for not administering a proper.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Executive session.
Executive session, have a motion, resolution number two. Resolution to meet an executive session.
Second.
Second. Roll.
Trustee P.J.?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Powell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanner?
Yes.
Chairman Marco?
Yes. The board will meet in the executive session for approximately 20 minutes to discuss personnel, contract matters, and farmland litigation matters protected by the chairman of the land privilege. No action will be taken in the next session. client privilege. No action will be taken in the executive session. Okay, uh, meeting is called back to order. Board met in executive session to discuss personnel, contract matters, and foreign litigation matters protected by attorney client privilege. No action was taken in the executive session.
Trustee Pichet?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Powell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Chairman? Chairman.
Okay. Vice Chair.
I'm here.
We got you.
I'm here. Chairman Marco?
Yes. Okay. They have a motion to adopt consent, resolution number three, approving the following items, as set forth in the memorandum, dated September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-one. A, FY two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two operating budget, B, the purchase of goods and services, C, vaccination policy, and D, personnel actions as listed in personnel actions, memorandum. Motion?
Yes.
Second, and roll.
Trustee Pichet?
Yes.
Trustee Powell?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Powell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanner?
Yes.
Chairman Marco?
Yes. Okay. Are there any remarks from any of the trustees? We don't have any of the public on the call, right? Nope?
No.
Okay. They have a motion to adjourn to meeting?
Oh.
Second?
Oh, we say no.
Did you say no, Sharon?
Oh, I don't want to go.
Well, next time, come here and you can stay after the meeting.
We'll feed you.
Okay. Roll call.
We have a motion.
The second was the second?
Second.
Second is?
Trustee Pichet?
Yes.
Trustee Powell?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Powell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanner?
Yes.
Chairman Marco?
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.